We have an emerging and recurrent need for early childhood education and care for families of their children too young to attend Head Start, BPIs, and other preschool programs in our community. Not only does that impact the economic mobility for families in Nelson County, it also has a lasting impact on a child's development and their school readiness by age five, and ultimately their success in school and beyond. In respect of your time, I want to take this moment to respond to your questions. Ultimately, MACA is prepared to offer after-school programming at both Tyrrhur Elementary and Rockfish Elementary Schools, serving 45 students in each location. We're able to expand the service age range from five to 12 to include our preschool students. We're also proposing a pilot of an early Head Start classroom at Tyrrhur Elementary School in the Learning Cottage that MACA currently owns on-site there to serve an emerging need for two-year-old students. That program will be free to families, and we already have an expansive list of families that are interested in enrolling in that program. We see that need increasing, and anticipate that we may come before you for future expansion of that program in partnership with Nelson County Public Schools and Service Security. I'd like to pause there and answer any questions you might have about the proposals, and allow my caller to address any other questions as well.
Questions?
Yeah, it sounds really good. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
Is there a limit... Now, the proposal for the earlier one, the 24 to 36 month, is there a potential cap of that, is it eight?
Our cap is per square foot. So in the space that we have available, the maximum number of students that I believe we could serve, and pardon me if I have my square footage off just a bit, may be up to 16 students, that would require four staff. At this point in time, we're prepared with two staff trained, ready, to include furniture amenities for a high-quality learning environment for those two-year-olds. Because it doesn't impact the quantity, menu, or other requirements of food service or transportation services, and all of the outdoor facilities will meet the needs of those students, there are no additional requests in Nelson County Public Schools aside from the use of that Learning Cottage at our cost for our conversation.
The pay, and I don't think you would decide on scale pay for the after-school care for kids?
So we've offered an initial pay scale that we hope is manageable for most families. What we're able to offer is that maybe new to the community is the ability of Virginia Department of Social Services Childcare subsidy. So families that are income-eligible will actually be able to utilize state funding in order to subsidize their childcare. Their co-pay is established on a sliding scale by the state, and the state will reimburse us for that. We believe this will meet the need of most families in Nelson County who are unable to provide tuition at the state at great. Although, we're happy to work with families to understand what that need is and adjust accordingly. We took a look at after-school programs across the region and began with a rate that was lower than many communities, and because of our licensed status, will ensure that all BPI students, all Head Start students, again, any family that would be income-eligible would receive childcare subsidy, will partner with families to ensure that it is smooth and that they're able to maintain enrollment at a reduced rate.
I would just do another thing. I will say, just as a board member, this has been a really important concern for many of our parents and the community. How does the school handles a child after-school? And I think we've been very lucky that we've been able to find support for after-school childcare, whether it's through YMCA or whether it's through our school members who stepped up to ensure that it went without after-school care. And so, kudos to our staff members who did that. But thank you as a community partner. We talked about moving forward as a board. It's this kind of partnership that really helps us to get into it. It's something that's so needed here locally, whether it's because we're isolated from other communities. Whatever the reason is, we are so appreciative of the deal for investing in us and investing in our communities.
Or to really deepening our relationship with Nelson County. We presented recently to the board supervisors and have expanded plans for serving the community, and we're excited about the opportunity to explore this.
And I just want to step up and say thank you because, you know, as I referred to then, we were building a plan as a client. You know, we were a service just so we could sustain. And, you know, it was an extension and a stress run. Some of the faculty, they were willing to step up because they knew how important it was. But, you know, we had some people come to the table and kind of try to help, but MACA was able to come to the table with a lot of solutions that will be more sustainable, you know, kind of looking at the big picture. And I appreciate that because I know that was a... I know that that was an undertaking for us, but I know it's an undertaking for everybody because it is important. So I do appreciate the potential partnership and the attempts to do that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, for the presentation and for the program, it is definitely going to fill a huge need. What, I was looking through this, what is the unsubsidized normal rate?
I'm wondering why, all the details online. Some of their details. We listed the unsubsidized monthly rates for full-time enrollment at $2.85. So that includes after-school, five days per week includes curriculum, staff, snacks. And then we do have some additional out-of-school options that families may be able to take advantage of.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Well, we're being...
Oh, and it's been a pleasure to work with. You're like ladies.
Okay, I think we've got a presentation now with Shannon on the group replacement and Mr. Ryan Follin.
It's been a pleasure to work with Ryan Follin. I guess your office is in Charles? So what we would do is to take a partnership with him where they would be providing materials to remove the high school. Savings for us would involve that if we're purchasing the materials, we would be liable for sales tax as a contractor would be and avoid that kind of markup. And also, there's some stated price increases that are going to come in. And if we purchase it, we're going to quickly. And you should see some digital savings in that cost as well. Let Ryan go over what the actual proposal would look like and the areas of the roof that could be replaced. We would issue an RFP. We have a pretty tight timeline. Issue the RFP for the labor only, so that we're buying the labor from a contractor but getting the materials from Garland.
Thank you guys for your time, Stephen. Thank you for having me. So you guys, a quick follow-up to the August order meeting. A little printout for you guys here. Got an update. We did an infrared scan of the entire roof. The guy last night, three hours, walked the whole roof with an infrared gun to look for moisture. Now identified this roof as a canopy or opposing. Results were very good. Some of the older sections of the school, Phase Two there, had some wet spots, but Phase One was in pretty good condition. So what we're proposing is to break it up as a Phase One. There's potential for a possible renovation of some of the backers of the schools that would kind of, I'd like to pull that part out, have that to be two, that we can kind of break it up as two separate phases. On Phase One, the proposed scope of work would be we're going to remove the rubber roof that's there currently all the way around the perimeter. We're going to reuse the existing installations in very good shape. The infrared scan verified that. It's going to save a lot of waste as well, so it's good. And we're going to put down a new roof system. Here's actually a sample for you guys. But this is, I mean, an extremely high-performance roof. It's a two-layered roof system where you have a base layer that goes in first, and then a second layer that goes over top. If you guys do pursue solar, thirty on it. This is, I mean, extremely puncture-resistant. It's a 265-mil thick system, sixty have now. So there would be no kind of concern of weeks down the road. So it gives you a long window. You choose to do it five years from now, you still have plenty of warranty left. And with us being up the road and the ones who warranty the roof ourselves, we have a partnership with any solar companies to make sure it's not broken and maybe there's some issues. On the backside of the school for Phase Two, that's where you have a little bit of more challenge. It's the older section. You have two roofs on it there. There's no asbestos in it, and it's a lightweight concrete deck. So tearing off the roof is going to be very challenging. It's disruptive. You're touching into damage to the deck that's there. We recommend putting some sort of liquid applied over the roof that's currently there so you can avoid all these issues. We were going to price it both ways. You can see side-by-side the cost difference of doing this restoration type coating versus the full tear-off all the way down the deck, insulation, full replacement, which requires it has two roofs. So you can kind of compare side-by-side. I expect the tear-off to be a pretty significant cost. Kind of your existing roof here, the rubber roof, and then this is the top. It goes up three steps. The black rubber would be the existing roof that's already on the building. They would clean it, and it would be the gray layer of fabric, and then the top layer. Before I kind of get into the timeline, is that kind of, do you guys have any questions on the samples or kind of the roof types we're kind of talking about there?
I trust you.
We're going with white options because it does kind of help some heat loss in the summer, and then also a little reflective. It's actually a little boost to the solar coming off the way through. As far as, you still have some time, but it's, the end of the year is coming close, and everything goes up January first. Every year is going to go up like sand on the insulation. Everything's going up, so if there is a way to get it out really quick and awarded, the project's not going to start until like summer. You still have plenty of time to hang out your ducts. At least save some pretty significant increases. And we're looking at six-figure plus increases on these materials.
Brian mentioned that they came out and should be able to do the roof. We also had a representative from a solar company that came out to take a look.
So Sun Tribe Solar is based out of Charlotte. So they're one of the biggest solar companies in the state, so it's good having them there. They specialize really in big school solar projects. That's where they're made. But this is what they came up with as a realistic kind of outlay for the panels.
So we think it's really important for the solar company and the contractor and the materials manufacturer to be in conjunction at the very beginning of the project to make sure that we don't spend good money after bad. But we're all on the same page that this is the end goal is that we want to be prepared to put solar without damaging the investment we're making in the roof. So that is why we had them out together to look at the project.
If you were decided to do solar, plus kind of the approach to this roof, pretty nice sustainable approach. You kind of show the community, I mean, you're saving, I mean, seventy, eighty dumpsters of wood, carbon on the solar panels. I mean, they have it at 20,000 tons. I mean, that's from the energy usage you're saving that a power plant would be burning to produce the energy. Sustainable partnership to kind of show the community. They have some debate along the front of the metal roof you would see from twenty-nine. I don't know if everyone loves that, but everyone dropped by would see and say, hey, there's, I mean, this is a green school. It's kind of like showcase right there. A lot of schools tend to do that.
So this is an annual offset, or is that a total in the life of the...
It was over the life, correct, yeah. In the life of... Twenty, it'd be a twenty-five year. Now, it'd be a twenty-five-year purchase agreement is how they do it. And so generally, all the upfronts, all the costs for labor, they handle all the maintenance for the twenty-five years, but then they're kind of selling the power back to you guys. And it's less than what your original payment...
We would need to speak with Sun Tribe and get a full proposal from them.
Correct, every kind of separated thing. But the roof, they can't put anything on until they're, I guess, it's a new roof.
Right, so the timing of the...
Correct, the panels would be going on fall of summer.
What is the projected length of, once you start, because of the time slot we have for some of the money, what's the length of how quickly you can get the roof done?
In two months.
So we're hoping that we can start June first, the time keeps coming next year. It's no doubt we can come off.
So we were to have some stipulation in RFP that there would be liquidated damages and typically...
So do we feel like the amount of insulation that we have on our roof now would act with...
Yeah. There's actually, it's an interesting asset. There's a chart you can see, and it shows if you have insulation and you go to R5, the savings is humongous. Once you get to like R10, R15, seventy years, you can get it back on. So the true benefit of increasing it to R30 is almost negligible as I think. Does that make sense?
Not really.
Like, if you go from zero...
I've got R60 in my house, and my electric bill is routinely under a hundred bucks, so it doesn't make any sense to me, honestly.
If you go from zero to two-inch, the savings is huge. But once you go from one inch to two-inch, it's drastically less. Two inches to three inches, it's even less. So as you keep adding more insulation, the actual savings is almost, takes seven years to even get it back, it's that much.
I noticed that Phase Two has an option for an extended warranty, but Phase One does not.
Phase Two is where in the liquid system. There's, at the RFP, there is an option to put another coat of it on top and extend it another fifteen years. Yeah, significant cost difference versus the initial. It was all a prep order to be done. It's just coming, cleaning it. At least one, possibly two.
Is possible to increase one with that in the RFP.
Absolutely, yeah.
And at the end of the life of...
Sorry, I'll update it right.
The oldest part of the school.
Yes, sir.
So at the end of the life of the school, then what would we be looking at then?
So at the end of first round, you could work out, extend it on the RFP. On Phase Two, potentially second. At some point, it's going to have to be torn off all the time with that.
Hey, well, we'll be all by that. George, at that point in thirty-five years, that's going to be a hundred years old. That portion of the school will be...
With the current RFP, it has full tear-off, so you can see what you can see side-by-side. We do have the option, but... There's a lot of uncertainty with it as well, so we'll be...
Thank you very much.
And just to emphasize, the reason why we have to work with Sun Tribe is to know what our options are. To be able, if we were so to choose to move in that direction, made one decision, and then we decided to... The two can't work together, or it's... Typically, it's, we just want to know what our options are so we know what we can do moving forward and what we're not moving forward. But we have options.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the sample. I was going to do the tortilla challenge.
We're so excited to be here.
My name is Kira Tano. I'm a senior. So our Fall Sports in Kansas last week with a really nice senior night ceremony. I think it's great that tradition exists, so everyone's accomplishments over the years get recognized. I really liked the addition of the inflatable tunnel. I thought that was really fun to walk. In other news, our school's One Act team won first place at their regional theater fest again, which is really exciting. So congratulations to them and good luck to them as they host. We are actually hosting the next round of competition in our school in a couple of weeks. So that's exciting. Yeah, so we're having a good time. Our sports are starting up soon, so there's a lot of exciting things going on at our school in the next couple of weeks.
Any questions?
Which sport did you...
I'm in marching band. I don't play sports.
But you were in the band, I thought you said. You have done a really amazing job. Tell us about marching band.
Oh, we went to... The petition was in Princeton, West Virginia, actually. We got rescheduled because of rain, and we actually ended up... We won second runner-up, so we got third place. Really exciting because that's the best we've done this whole season. It's been a rebuilding season because we have a lot of young kids this year, but they've all done so great, and it's really nice to see.
Thank you. Great to have you all.
Perfect. So we're now at the point where we have comments from board members, and I'm going to start down with Mrs. Claire.
So, from meetings, we had a prep board meeting last month, and I don't have my notes, you know, so I can't remember. But now I've given us some substance to... It was a really short meeting, and we had it at ID Creek, which was my first time at ID Creek, actually. So that was kind of an interesting... Going there. And they're working on a long-term plan, which I guess is probably the most important part of our relationship. And we're starting the budget year, of course, as well. So all of those things are part of the prep board. I did want to say thank... Play once again, and I've got it on my calendar for sure to go and see it on the nineteenth. Thank you.
Mr. Teal?
First of all, I want to say a very sincere thank you to all of our school principals. Recognizing them tonight was very important. While the superintendent and her team set the tone for the entire school system, you all, it gets done without you all setting the tone in your buildings. And as Ms. Powell pointed out a little while ago, that is, there's so much work that goes on in a school that nobody knows about that the principals do, and the hours that they're there and all of the things. I had the opportunity to go to the Trumpertreat at Tyrrhur with my grandchildren and saw Ms. Carter out there. And it's that way all the time. If you go to a sporting event, the principals of those schools are there. A lot of times when there's recommends going on, the principals are there too. So thank you all. Glad that we were able to recognize that. And also wanted to say congratulations to the driver department and the One Act play team on their region championship. Just another absolute number, another chapter in the story of success in this program. Thanks to Ms. Driver and her team all pulling out. Just getting these kids, talent out of these kids, and getting them to, that they're able to do things that on day one, they would have said no. I've seen them firsthand over the years, and it's absolutely amazing. So, thank you all.
Mrs. Tarnasal?
First of all, I'll start out by just echoing that thank you to all of our principals. The work that you do is valuable, and it is because of you that the schools are run as well as they are. I also want to say thank you to our board of supervisors. We had a joint meeting, and it was nice to have them all come to the table. And what I hope is that that is just the beginning of many more things for us all to sit down and collaborate in some areas where we can come together and hopefully conversations prior to budget and prior to things happening, that we keep everyone informed. So I want to thank them. Also want to say that I participated in the delegate assembly today. It was a long day for Mrs. Powell and I, but thank you for being there. Thank you for being our representative and getting through that. And I'm also looking forward to spending time next week with my colleagues in Williamsburg for the Virginia School Board Association. So looking forward to that.
Mr. Parkins?
Just thanks to everyone to share that. Thanks to the president. I echo all of what you have to say.
There's been a lot going on this last month. It feels like things have really ramped up as we put through the holiday season. I was able to attend the middle school play. If you did not go to the middle school play, I have to tell you, it was top-level, unbelievable. I believe the lines that they were able to remember, memorize, and follow. It was fantastic. So please, share that back with your students and everybody else. Really cool to see, and one of the things we talked about as a board is sort of that collaborative community, whether it's between our buildings or in our community. We got a lot of help from the high school and... And that was really cool to see, so kudos to you for that. The middle school also had a sale fundraiser at Ann's Family Restaurant Saturday, and I had to go buy new pants because the kids are really good salesmen, and they brought me into some cinnamon buns. That was really nice, and I think, you know, Ann's is a lot for the community and is an important support. So as we talk about supporting the businesses that support us, I'm going to give a little shout-out. Really cool to see the kids cooking, the kids serving. That was a fun. So share with Mr. Parkins that that was a very... The One Act, congrats. You guys are just a powerhouse, and they just constantly win time and time again. This is a program, so a big shout-out to them. The FFA, if you hadn't heard, also had a soils team that won states. You know, for a little community, we've got a lot of good things going on. That team's qualified to go to Oklahoma, so we are blessed with kids and a community that do a lot of different things in itself. As we finish out fall sports, I love the tunnel and the recognition of all the seniors, whether it's cross-country golf, volleyball, football, a lot of teams. We've got a lot of teams that are celebrating, so congrats for that. That collaborative community, the Trumpertreat at Tyrrhur was so much fun. So much fun. And that, the community citizens that participated, the school, the kids in school, like the honor society participating, and people went all out. If you didn't go, I'm telling you, if you don't have kids, go next year because it's for seeing how people decorate their trunks. And just a couple other little things. Marching band, and the new one had a phenomenal start to the year as well. So congrats. You guys went in some awards, and really, like you said, this was a rebuilding. You guys are still doing it, so congrats. Veterans Day, again, we recognized it earlier. Hope to be at Rockfish for the Veterans Day. Thank you for the email telling us what's going on. But I don't think that there's enough that can be said. Thank you. I think Janet spoke to that as well as the VSPA. And we'll talk a little bit, guys, about the legislative positions when we get to that point later in the agenda. So that's it. I think we have more comments. Important dates coming up. Really, as we close in on the end of the month, we've got the VSPA convention next week. We also have the clerks convention for you, Mrs. Potten, next week as a part of the VSPA, and then we'll hit a much-needed Thanksgiving towards the end of November. I think students and teachers and everyone electives are probably ready to have their kids take a little bit of a break. We are starting tonight with our pre-budget public hearing, the process of the budget. Finish this right, guys, like from yesterday. But here we are again. And hopefully, those conversations with the board supervisors that we started will continue to help speed that process down. Any other dates we need to discuss? Good enough. Well, at this point, we are going to hand it over to you, Donna.
All right, well, very much, I think we kind of covered a lot of the things that I was going to talk about, but one of, a couple of the things that haven't come up. We're pretty excited about the announcement that Nelson County Public Schools will be providing electric buses. And those buses were awarded to us, and we're excited about it. It's a no-risk, no-cost to us. It will, one, replacing two fifteen-year-old-plus buses that we have that really need to be cycled out. Also, it'll give us a chance to be able to, you know, test drive it, if you will, for a horrible pun, but we'll be able to see. We're in a challenging geographical position. We're mountainous, we're expansive, and this will give us a chance to see how it can be for us, will it work for us? Is it something that we really want to use? Now, with that being said, we'll be strategic about where we place it and when we use it. We want to also be very responsible in how we do that. But it's a $790,000 grant that we had to qualify for to begin with. Applications went in, I believe, in, I think, August. So it is an opportunity that we see that we're not asking for more money from anyone to be able to do this, and it could be a potential option for us. Maybe not. And it, and it could be a potential option for us, maybe not, we don't know. But we really want to take an opportunity to be able to evaluate it to see if it's, that could work out. And so we just appreciate those opportunities and we're looking forward to seeing, um, how it, how the efficiency of it goes. Our greenhouse project, we have meetings and we're gonna talk about the greenhouse project. It has come to fruition. Yes, it's, it's finished. We've sent our final payment off. And really more exciting is we've been able to let our teacher know, start the movement process, start the access for our students to be able to use it. And start to kind of work with that part of the curriculum and at least those experiences. So we're pretty excited about that. Elementary schools in collaboration with food nutrition, with nutrition. We talked about the collaborative effort. We have our elementary schools participating in kind of like the holiday meal, uh, where between Thanksgiving and one holiday, we rotate as to the grade levels inviting their families to join them for these meals. And again, we value our community and we want them to be a part of us because we know that they're, uh, really integral to our success. So that's coming up on November 15th, but also we'll have another round of it in December. Uh, we, we did have a, a prep meeting at Ivy Creek, uh, which is a program and an opportunity for our students, especially students who qualify, to be able to get the education and the support that they need. So the presentations were about what the programs that are offered and how it can support students. It was an opportunity for us to experience that and, and that was a really great experience for us. I also went to, I went to Susical, um, Junior and, um, not a drama person, I, I'll freeze. But the skill that took place there, even for a larger division, um, let alone a smaller rural division, is impressive. And the numbers that and so that was great for me. One act play, it's a, it's a theater system and it helps the excitement and it goes on and on. And they give back from the high school kids back to it. And, and I think for us, we had the fall sports conclusion and it was exciting to see the senior night and to see the excitement of cheerleaders, golf, cross-country, um, football, everyone being a part of it. And then gearing up for it and then recognizing that we're so well-rounded, the FFA, that's highly competitive, not only in the state, but nationally. So, uh, I think just for me, it's just been a fantastic experience to be able to see students on display, not just in the classroom, but outside where a lot of students start to find themselves and their confidence. The Nelson County team made up of individuals from the schools, administrators, central office, developed and submitted a safety equipment grant application. And so I'm excited to share that at 1:45 today, we were receiving notice from the V O E that we're in receipt of a $250,000 grant, um, that we submitted, like I said, in August. So we'll start to be able to the, the plans and the measures that we had, um, and, and start to bring it, begin the process for that. Some of those things, not all of the things, included, um, like one type metal detectors. Front of the high school to be able to detect things further out into the parking lot, being able to identify who can come and go from onto our campus. And then also voice cameras, voice, voice opportunities so we can hear things. And that's just a couple of things that incorporate. We're pretty pleased about that opportunity. I think of those who were granted it, nine of us got $250,000. So that's the most you can get. So we are just applaud the team that worked on putting that grant into play. It's a long time coming. We put it in in August. Now we're just finding out about it so we can kind of move forward with some of the things in addition to what's already been done over the last few years. I bring that up is that's particularly important right now. It's important because we're aware of that in the community, in our schools. One, that was brought about from a statement made Friday and then also rumors and social media that kept you in on Monday. So, you know, sadly, um, there's a few other divisions that experienced this Monday, um, in and around the Commonwealth. And, you know, sometimes the security measures that you see, um, you can see them, sometimes you can't see them. But there are a multitude of, um, various security measures that have been put into place over the course of a few years, but also that we're planning on putting in place, thankfully, because of this grant. We also continue to research opportunities, uh, research what systems are out there, how does it fit us, how, what, what can it offer? Um, how does it work? We also continue professional development in that area. And I'll give you an example, October, uh, school-level administrations, in addition to division-level leaders, participated in a training session with an active shooter expert, um, to kind of run us through some things and provide us with some training. But part of that was to walk through the high school and, and take a look at rooms, to look at what we already have in place. And this is a person who's an expert in a lot of these security measures and was really impressed with the things that we've already put into place and continue to talk about what we plan on. We gave him the updates on what we were wanting to do with our grant. And so that kind of makes you feel like, all right, we're on the right path, we're doing what we need to do. And we know because that's important to us. So that was, that was a good experience. You know, it's always a sobering experience because you realize what you're talking about and you realize what you're doing. But we take these types of things very seriously, um, but because we want to support our community. And as I, I stated in August, when we first kind of came together early on for our board meetings, is, you know, we want to continue to balance the safety of all of our students and the needs, whether it's physical, emotional, mental, all of those needs and balance it so that we can make it work for us. It's not easy and it requires diligent effort in researching it. And I want to thank the students, staff and the parents who have reached out to us. You know, anytime you, you hear something, those who provided us information, that is critical to us being able to conduct an investigation or to act immediately and providing those who can do something about it. So I really, um, want to thank, um, the students and the staff and the parents and the families who did, um, reach out directly to us because that was very helpful. Because the people are the first line of defense. In most of the instances that take place, someone knew about it. It's just, I don't know, maybe they thought nothing was gonna happen. Maybe they thought someone was gonna say something. But we know that the people are the greatest barrier to things happening. And we just, um, like I said, in August, if you see something, say something to the appropriate people who can act immediately. If you see something, say something. And if something just doesn't feel right, something seems awful, tell someone. Um, you know, sometimes we hear from kids, well, I don't want to be a snitch. That's not snitching, that's, you're helping someone, you're helping a whole bunch of people, but you're helping someone else out. And so trying to kind of get past that barrier and create a comfort level with being able to open up those communications. And, and again, that's safety responsibility to all of us. We all want to work together. And I, I appreciated the collaboration that we had with a lot of people. And so I just think, you know, I wasn't expecting at 1:45 to be able to get that $250,000. And I'm really pleased that we're able to get that and move forward, particularly in a timely manner. As was mentioned, the trunk or treat activity was there. I mean, it's fantastic just to see our community. And again, it goes back to our people, our people are involved. Rockfish had a fantastic zombie run. We know that they're, uh, Veterans Day Assembly with our marching gowns. Kind of effort and being able to, you know, invite our people to be able to go out to that because it's an important event. And we really want to be able to, to kind of support that. So I, I appreciate you, uh, and the time and being able to share. But there's a, there's a lot of great things to be able to share with what, what is going on with our students and our schools and, you know, and the recognition that we're working together to move forward.
The, um, the grant is great news. That's, that's phenomenal. And thank you. I know that's been in the works for a while, so just thank you for that.
So now we're at the comments, public comment section. The first public comment we're gonna do are the non-agenda items. So I will ask, in lieu of another paper here to talk about some instances that happened this summer last week, we just ask that you be respectful in your conversations, honest and true to yourself, so we're hearing from you. But we do remind you that each public comment, because each person is limited to three minutes, that the board will not be entered into any dialogue at this point. We will ask you to stop at three minutes, that's fair if we give one so there's a part to stop at three minutes. And again, report to which you have to say. So the first person is Helen. And if you can state your name.
My name is Helen Hamel. I live in, about 71 Lowesville Road, Ty River. And I have a high school student who's in ninth grade. And we've had a lot of, um, mental problems, health problems. So the school's really helped us a lot. His, his safety. He came to us, you know, up to bed thinking that, you know, the father having a gun pointed to his head and, you know, he was extremely upset about many things. He's been home all week. Meant to, that I emailed everyone to let him know that. Just, I talked to Amanda and, um, what she you know, we had like a 30-minute conversation today on the phone. And what she said is amazing because she, to get grant and I think my problem is, is that I just know, but between now and the time we do these things, what are, what are some of the things that are gonna prove the safety of children? I mean, there's, besides buzzing in and having one officer, there's actual, any real safety at the school? And I know that there are some parents that think that some of us go overboard, but I'm concerned that there's a child walking one day and runs to the bathroom and hide. And then come out and start shooting and nobody ever knows. And that could possibly happen. Like I talked to earlier about how you never know somebody could pass the school and just start shooting. You know, so it's not just a social media thing, it's just the safety of our children. And I think that if we even had more, um, you know, deputies, more coverage, more, you know, just more help with they also need to be listened to, they need, they need mental help and they need to be talked to as groups. And they need to understand that this, you know, this is all real. They see it on TV, they've heard about it for years now, but now it's happening to them. And so that's just, that's it. You're welcome.
Next we've got Rhonda Harvey.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Harvey. I'm at 72 Plain Livingston. It's been said to us that the school system is doing all to keep our kids safe. I do not believe this. Our kids do not feel safe and for this reason, I come to you tonight to ask you to take specific measures to provide better security and prevent a future, prevent a future of bad situations. As it stands now, we all have to know that vaping, drugs and weapons are entering our schools. Kids can literally put anything in their backpacks and on themselves and enter our schools. How would anyone know? You cannot tell just as a student to determine this. We have no one checked in other than just by facial recognition. We can no longer wait to have these items enter our school and decide to take action. If something is found to harsh consequences. What I've experienced just here this year, one or two days of in-school suspension just for a vape. These kids are all on I think students have to be searched, their bags have to be searched and/or scanned. And I feel like once this happens on a daily basis, students will understand that there is zero tolerance and severe consequences will result. To even attempt to bring in these items. So I ask you, as you enter into your budget season, please want us to make changes happen for the safety and security of our schools. Thank you.
Last obstacle. Philip Purvis.
My name's Philip Purvis. I'm a fellow down in Megan, Leanship in Virginia. And what I did was a vote to improve. And, um, I was at the joint procession with the school board, just, uh, listening to some of the comments and stuff. One of the things I don't think that maybe the school is looking at is a flat roof is always a problem. And y'all have, in the newer schools, they've gone and I'm just wondering, I mean, $5 million, even with today's cost of materials by the law. And I, I don't know what the, uh, where the load-bearing walls are in the, in the school. I do believe that there are center walls that are load-bearing, uh, that you could go in and, and, uh, that could be knee walls placed, you could put a in there where you actually have a slope roof, a flat roof. And I believe it could be done much cheaper than $5 million. You wouldn't have to, uh, remove any of the old roofing or anything. You wouldn't have to raise your air conditioning and heating units up and that. But the trusses could be designed to carry, uh, that load. You wouldn't actually be adding load to the old roof because you'd be from the load-bearing points, uh, on the school. Like here, again, I haven't seen blueprints, so I don't know where the load-bearing points are. I do feel like that there are, there are partition walls inside the school that run from, from the ground all the way to this, to the top floor, to where you could just come in there and add a, a floor truss, you could use something like a, just, well, let's just say a truss system. You get yourself, you wouldn't add water instead of having a flat roof. Everybody knows if you dump water on the floor, it's gonna look for a place to leak and it'll find it if there's one there. Much less money, get you a roof that will probably last longer and be much more efficient than, than $6 million. That roof, you can have it placed in in 25 years.
That concludes public comments for non-agenda items. Do not have anybody registered for public comments for the pre-budget hearing. Public comment section. Um, four. Come just approach.
Well, in power, I have a bit too much out of my mouth. Thank you for all for your service there, I really appreciate it. Got two children that have seven now and, uh, of course, Monday and Friday are unnerving as far as our parents. And I loved how the superintendent went through the active shooting scenario, like someone getting this grant. And this is like with your parents, I just, in my opinion, was a lack of communication. And I know it's hard and it's something quickly is happening, but I think even letting parents know, like, we're working on this, we care, we understand that as a society, unfortunately, we're dealing with these issues. And how can we, you know, be aware of this? And maybe even like, I don't know, write a newsletter about what the administration is doing. I know that my, my husband went and picked up my, my children from school and importantly, and they really did not want to go to school. Work piles up, they moved to, you know, you know, it's, you know, it's not like it's a, let's get in school, this is a fun thing. It's actually a very stressful thing for all of the children that are involved. But from him getting and back home and us deciding what we should do, me calling several times and not moving through, probably an hour and a half and then another half an hour before we got anything home. So, you know, having children, that's really concerning, not knowing what's going on, not able to communicate with the children. I don't know how the community feels about metal detectors, but I really think that'd be a great thing to do with a budget. I'm sure it's very expensive, but we all do it all the time. Go see a game at UVA, we all go through metal detectors. Anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you all.
Congrats. Girl too. Okay. Karen closes the public comment period for both items. Move on to the next portion of their agenda, which is the consent agenda. Any questions about the registers, the meeting minutes or the monthly funding to report? If there are no questions about that, I'd like a motion to approve the consent.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda's been passed and approved. We're on to the items for information section of our agenda. The first two items are meeting minutes. It's the first reading for both of these. It's last month's regular school board meeting. And then also the special called joint meeting with supervisors. Please take a chance to look those over. If there are any changes, additions, deletions that you need in those minutes, please let Mrs. Fonten know so she can make the adjustments before we vote on them at the second reading next month. So then next, we have a presentation from Dr. Hester on the VSB A October 2022 policy update. It'll be a first reading for those updates as well.
So, you know, we do have VSB A policy update coming up under IIa. Or packets. If you will see additions to that or changes represented through the green underline, the emissions or the. So I just want to draw. You can begin the review process for this first reading. Second reading will then take place in December. I don't blame you for being late up in the year. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention so you know what's going on. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Shannon Urban, you are up next on the items for information to update on numbers and budget adjustments.
We were able to. The projected levels of the state. That we receive $151,686, less than state funding of what we had anticipated when we drafted our budget last March. We've been able to go through. Looking at our current staffing levels and what we didn't have. Maybe, you know, one of the good things, I guess, there's still a lot in any situation. And for us, hiring. At the beginning of the year, that were less than 26 years of age. They didn't participate in our health insurance programs. We've been able to pull some funds around, but we've got that money covered in our budget. It's already moved from a line into a contingency fund. And as state revenue becomes more clearer, every year that is on the sales tax, we'll know exactly where we are.
Any questions for Shannon?
So Dr. Hester, all this presentation. Halfway to success, update and presentation.
So I have the distinct advantage of being able to do the fun stuff and be able to talk about everything that's in the papers. And it is my last shared comments. But when we take a look at our office administration, there, there was participation in the Virginia Association of School Superintendents Conference. And that's an annual conference where you get your budget and your legislative updates or projections for the coming year. We also got a state of education provided by Governor Yonkin, Secretary Gadera, and State Superintendent Ballow, where they just, they are able to outline where they, we believe, where they believe we are in education and the pathway and the road ahead. Additionally, through our presentations, as you heard tonight with Garland, we are working on a project to deal with. But also the envelope system, other aspects, and particularly safety aspects of our buildings to make sure that we address as we move forward. One of those items are, we discussed during the board meeting that we had earlier or at the end of October, I believe. It seems like it's going so fast. Additionally, the hard work that Ms. Urban and Mr. Campbell put into finishing the greenhouse project, which it seemed like it was forever. So, and it took a lot of effort on behalf of our people to continue to stay on top of that to make sure that it did come to completion. Next up for instruction, October was kindness month. And there was a great deal of effort promoting this because we understand that when our students feel part of our schools and community, and additionally, our staff. We included our staff and our community in this. And, and there's a reason why. It's because when you belong to this great community, you have a greater likelihood of success and the support of that. So additionally, the literacy act is something that's put into place, particularly through legislation. And there's a great deal of effort. Ms. Douglas and her team of, of our educators and our instructors and our administrators have done a great job promoting this and professional development. And there's a, a great deal of focus on reading and literacy, as you can see here through these pictures. And having not only our teachers, but our instructional leaders working very closely with our students. It's planning. It takes a lot of effort to know what you're doing and how to do that. Virginia literacy plan. But professional development with writing. Algebra one readiness with all thinking maps, everything. All our initiatives, our initiatives that take place, it takes training. And I appreciate the effort that goes into that and the shifting of the balances, the book study that we're also incorporating into all of this. So I appreciate that. In terms of our pupil personnel, Dr. McCormick attended the Virginia Council of Administrators of Special Education, which was a, a conference focused on supporting the administrators involved directly with special education. Aspects, initiatives, and things that take place for that. Also, I, I so appreciate the inclusivity that we have with all of our students and allowing all to be a part of something that's on a bigger level. So things like you see in the bottom left, the drive your tractor to school day. Now, I wasn't allowed to drive a tractor. I wasn't forced anything important, but we all were involved in it. It was a really great experience. It really worked together and those students had a chance to be a part of it, as well as participating with the Nelson Memorial Library and all these different types of activities. There's been a great effort of people personnel and sped services to be able to work with secondary transitions and also the tier-two group. Those are the secondary levels of the things that person being able to work through behaviors or mental health or just approaches to the transition. And that's important. We look at human resources and communications. Has chosen her team because they, and they find ways to get it done. And that's not always easy. I know, travel quickly back so she could be here today because she and Ms. Walker participated in the Virginia Association of School Personnel Administrators Conference, which is a great way to be able to addressing our staffing shortages. There and grants coming out to be able to do such things. Especially, I love this acronym, VARs. So it's the retention and recruitment support grant. And really what that does is it allows us to provide tuition. I know, couldn't help myself. To recruit and retain through tuition reimbursement. So if you already have an endorsement, if you're adding on something to your current license. So if you're seeking your license, try to provide you the tuition reimbursement. You're trying to add to it to try to get a grant that could result in $30,000. There's a reoccurring theme that we are constantly looking for outside funding through grants in order to support, to alleviate stressors that we have. So when it does come to budget season, we're trying to find alternative measures to be able to do this. Our recruiting and retention. And there's also constant effort to be able to advertise and market so we can recruit, recruit that high-quality individual here into Nelson. In terms of technology, rise vision. We talk security measures that we're looking to implement. Well, one of those ways, and it can be used in a bigger picture fashion, is it's an easy-to-use digital signage. So if, all throughout the buildings. Moved access to it is you can put certain signings up there. So it could be, hey, congratulations, FFA, on first place in your soil. Or it could be currently in a modified. Or something that there's a more universal communication tool that can be used throughout a building. And it, it can be used more widespread. And I appreciate Mr. Cargill and his team wanting to do that. Also, the APC project they're going through, and they're trying to support our servers to be able to keep them running in case that there was a glitch or a surge in power. So you see that bottom left. And looking to quotes for the security cameras. You heard me talk about it earlier with our. It all over buildings, but specifically in certain areas where we recognize we really want to enhance that for security reasons and being able to incorporate that. Mr. Cargill also worked with a lot of people on a security grant. So I appreciate that. But they don't just stick with IT and, you know, the technology. They go out and they work with our teachers and they work with our students. And I appreciate so much this collaborative effort with Melissa Falls and the, the Ty River kindergarten teachers to be able to create a video and to support the kindergarten community building. And so I so appreciate just that willingness to get invested and see what our students are doing. Because all the efforts we do in all these other departments, if it's not helping our teachers and our students, we need to take a look at that. And I really appreciate that effort. Maintenance. Well, a lot of effort and attention has been invested in this greenhouse as well as the Rockfish project. And so I think Mr. Campbell and his crew are going to be very excited. Maybe focusing on some other things like roof or HVAC or some other things. But also he, with Ms. Urban, met with Mr. Foley, as well as kind of looking at further options in the future that we have for this project. Still working in order to provide retention of a sufficient amount of fuel inventory for our buses because there is a potential or anticipated diesel shortage. So we know that that's going to be so being proactive about that planning process. Also continues to work with different organizations to look at how do we continue to improve our schools? And also hopefully bringing that Rockfish project to a conclusion. Transportation, and we mentioned it earlier. Obviously, the whole bus drivers taking our children to and from school is integral to the safety. But we also see an exciting addition when it comes to these electric buses. And I, I kind of talked a little bit about, we're, I think, one of nine other schools in Virginia. To be able to. Really to see how it can work for us and see. And I think that that's the great part. Maybe it'll work really, really well, or maybe this just isn't for Nelson County. But either way, we're going to have to decide that. He's, Mr. Ashley, so he's been with maintenance to be able to establish charging stations. One obviously on this end of the county and then another two kind of and just being very thoughtful about that process and how to do it. Food nutrition. I really appreciate Ms. Penal and all of her team because they're very thoughtful about being creative about what they do, but still trying to, as close to it as to do the semi. Creations of meals and using local products. And I just really appreciate the creativity to, to think through that problem solving and integrating taste test Tuesdays. I love that. And it's beginning of each month where they. Where they try out different things. Now, these are elementary kids. Their taste. They're not whipped cream, not, you know, pie. It's sweet potatoes. And their thumbs up, they're loving it. And they've had a great response to it. And I just, I can't thank our, our workers enough to be able to be creative and to integrate that. And they're using local products as much as they can. And I, and I love that, that full circle support. And then the. River Elementary staff at a Halloween house to decorate. Selected a lucky winner to be able to hand it off to. And so last but not least, I just want to thank all of our veterans, whether they're our staff or in our community. Because without them, you know, obviously, our world is not going to be the same. And I just want to thank them for their service and what they do for us. And that is the conclusion of our presentation. Do you have any questions?
On the potential diesel shortage. It's, it's hard to create more storage. So, so what? Because it's, I've, I've been watching that a little bit and it's a little undetermined about if, when, how.
And I think that that's where the stages that we're at is trying to be thoughtful about what our opportunities are to be able to, one, how do we maintain what we have and where to restore it. And so that's. Last, and then actually being able to work together, to be able to work through that and think, not only how, because we're kind of there, but how are we going to go about implementing that? So I wish I could give you a much more detailed answer to that question. And I will definitely work with them to, to find out more about that.
Discussions for the state at state level, for them to have a reserve stock for schools. I mean, is there any?
Yeah, to set aside would be.
No, I'm not. It's probably, but you know, it would be a good question for. You talk about the schools as a coalition to say is. If we really get to this point where there is high risk, and I don't think we're there based on, but I see there's some of the data. But can, can the state, school systems say, can we have some reserve stock say for us for specifically for us? And the operation.
I'll try to find an answer and read back to you. Any other questions?
Because today, Gina and I had the honor to participate in the VSB A delegate assembly. It was, there was a lot of discussion. The position. Part of the confusion in the discussion was people got wrapped up beyond.
Yeah, and there's actually a deadline for any changes. And I think people missed the deadline and they thought coming to the delegate assembly was their opportunity to make their changes.
Discussion. Yeah, yeah, agreed. At the end of the day, we as a group voted yes on all of those legislative positions. And all of the legislative positions did pass. There was a modification on, and Gina helped me, on the. Electric bus.
One that added propane.
Yes.
School bus legislative.
Added propane to it. And I believe that was the only change that we really saw within, within those positions. So all did pass. There's a new slate of officers. What was recommended by the nominating committee did. Afforded on an email to everyone. And Gina has highlighted in it for the workforce readiness, the collecting, all of those. You should have an email with reports from those specific work groups.
Gina, one more.
So, long story short for us, we. Positions and all of the positions passed as, and not. But the areas that we want our people to focus on when they're having conversations with, with.
So that's the update on that. We are now at the point we're going to talk about items for action. Bonus for part-time employees. And do you want to chat about that? Or do we have questions?
Yeah, I would actually. Prepared our 2022, 2023 operational level. We set aside funds to allow for a 1,000. That included, not only those, there were some keep under conditions, but all full-time employees. It takes everyone working together to make the school run. We have a number of part-time employees that work every day and work on a regular basis that would not be included in that group to get a bonus in this summer. Unfortunately, but fortunately, in this instance. Teaching medicine that we've had a substitute in. So there are some segments in that line. I'd like to propose for you to consider offering a $500 bonus. Part-time employees so that we can retain them. We need them to make the school run. That would be.
Any questions?
We're going to take these items as an actual items with one at a time to come. I, um, so. The mistake that I am in favor of that. When we talk about one Nelson, that means we need to put the support behind the one Nelson. And one Nelson is every single person. So I, I am absolutely in favor of that, Gina. And thank you for being able to find ways to maximize unfortunate situations where maybe we lose people, but we can.
If there's no discussion and there is agreement, is there a motion on the table to approve the?
I move that we authorize the superintendent to pay each a part-time employee $500.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed bonus for part-time employees, yes. Thank you. So we have a field trip request from, I believe it's the high school drama department. This is their trip, their annual trip to, to New York that they typically do. Are there any questions in regards to the trip? If not, can I have a motion to approve? It's an out-of-state trip to approve the, the NCHS field trip request to New York City.
I move that we approve the field trip request to New York City about the drama department.
Second?
I'll second you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we'll need a motion from our board action from closed session in regards to our discussion there. So can I have a motion? there, so can I have a motion for that action?
I'll make the motion, this is number one, for expulsion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Student payers text. All right, any, so other matters, we've got multiple.
You need to do the personal action.
Oh, yes, yes. Can I have a motion to approve?
I need that we approve the personal action.
Second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Disposed. Personal action, we'll prove it to the standards. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are on to other matters at this point. T A B's loaded several things into our other matters, really nice V S B A policy page update in regards to, and this is a really good, I'm going to try to save this so we can reference it. We also have some required reading, I think, this is from Elizabeth Nguyen on FOIA, and then, we will need to let T A B know if you have completed all of the necessary training, so we do let her know so that she can document in her system.
Every year, all of us, every two years.
Every two years. And so T A B, Mrs. Fonten will track that for us and keep us straight, so if you may need to redo some training, go and do it, links in there online for us to access that training, so she's made it easy for us. She's made a foolproof for us, because she knows how to do it. And then also included is your T A B legislator to school month toolkit, and I think there's some conversations happening about what that's going to, if that's going to. So I think that's it for other matters, anything else that we don't have listed on other matters that we want to discuss at this point? No. Okay, thank you all, appreciate you all. So we're meeting, if I have any questions, you adjourn our meeting?
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thank you all.